Groveland Township regular board meeting for February tenth, 2020. We rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bob DiPalma?
Yeah, I'm here.
Patty Bass, Shelley Kid.
She's excused.
Jim Christopher?
Here.
Gina Musarelli?
Yes.
Everybody received a copy of today's agenda? I believe Patty may have to add two items under new business, Carrie's letter and Danielle?
Yes, as definitely.
Anything else that anybody wants to add to it? Not a motion to approve the agenda as submitted, but the changes would be in order?
I'll motion to approve the agenda as submitted with the changes.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's approved.
Who's supported?
No, I motion.
Gina?
Okay.
I'm sorry, did I miss it?
I was gonna say.
Gina did. Okay, then you should have copy of the board minutes from January thirteenth and the fire board minutes of February fifth. Questions or comments on those? Not a motion in order, is in order, to approve them as submitted?
I'll motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Financials, since Shelley's excused today, I think we can probably skip some of this, but Patty, do you want to go over the new budget amendments or accounts payable?
We do have a few budget amendments in 101. Well, I guess we have none in 101. It was a plus to the revenue there. In 206, the repairs and maintenance bills is short by eight ninety-six twenty-two. I spoke with Chief Mason and he would like that to be moved from the repair and maintenance rental house. Is that what we decided on that?
That was fine.
Okay. And then we are also short utilities, eight hundred and forty-seven, or eight hundred dollars and forty-seven cents. And we're gonna move that from three thousand out of equipment purchase. And I think...
That was it.
That was it. And then in building, since we've been paying our inspectors on ten ninety-nines and we've been a bit busy, we're short again in the electrical inspector's pay and the plumbing inspector's pay. So I will move those out of 101 building reserve into there. So those are the budget amendments. And...
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? Carrie, would you take a roll call?
Patty Bass?
Yes.
Jim Christopher?
Yes.
Gina Musarelli?
Yes.
Bob DiPalma?
Okay. Next, do you have anything you want to do on the account payable?
The accounts payable are three thousand, six hundred, five dollars and eighty-four cents out of 101. One thousand, three hundred and ninety out of two four nine for a total out of the general fund of four thousand, nine hundred, ninety-five dollars and eighty-four cents. And for the fire fund, it was ten thousand, four hundred, ninety-six cents and seventy-nine cents for the accounts payable. That's all I got right now. So that's my motion to accept accounts payables as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? Carrie, would you take a roll call?
Jim Christopher?
Yes.
Gina Musarelli?
Yes.
Bob DiPalma?
Yes.
Patty Bass?
Yes.
Okay, financial reports are pretty well covered, all that now.
Yep, they're all good.
An investment report, Shelley left one for me over the weekend, but we'll use it at the budget session, so since she's not here to present herself. Okay, that moves on to public hearings, there's nothing scheduled, presentation's nothing scheduled, and new business, nothing scheduled, moving to new business and... Yes.
So, do you want to...
Yeah.
That's Carrie. So Carrie? Yeah, Carrie's leaving us, so I make a motion that we accept her letter of reservation she submitted and wish her well. She's done a good job for us, you know, I'm gonna miss her. I also, so I have one other thing. She has offered to come back like on Wednesday evening and all because we don't have someone up to speed yet for the building plan and zoning. So I would also like to make a motion to pay her at her rate at this time. To have her come back until we get the new person up to speed. Okay, so...
Is that your motion?
My motion is that we pay Carrie Allen at the going rate she's at now to come back and help train the new person, building planning and zoning and...
Is there a second?
I can second that.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Yeah, when, what's the gap timeframe we're trying to look at?
Well, you're not getting somebody hired for it, yeah.
No, that's what I'm saying, I know it went out in the paper, yes.
So I think it'll kind of depend on how long we end up getting somebody in and as long as she's willing to do it to get a transition. There's a lot of stuff that goes through that, it's a whole lot.
Several resumes have come in, some have qualifications, so...
Those might be easier to do, so a couple of those.
We'll have to reach out and see where we're at with that.
Okay, motion made, approved. Carrie, you want to take a re, um, a vote on that?
Gina Musarelli?
Yes.
Bob DiPalma?
Yes.
Patty Bass?
Yes.
Shelley Kid, I'm sorry, Jim Christopher?
Yes.
You're gonna be sorely missed if you do any great deal of work, you're like the right arm to everybody here. We're happy for you that you're doing a job.
Thank you very much, I'll miss you all.
Don't be a stranger.
I won't.
Next item on the agenda would be Danielle.
So Carrie, for all of you who may not have known, was my deputy clerk. So with Carrie leaving, that leaves that position open and I'm not sure where Danielle went, she, but I was...
She went to an office and she's had a coffee.
Oh dear, well, we can come back to that if we want. Can we pass over it till she comes back and it's really better?
Okay, next item on the agenda was originally labeled A, it's the 2020 Road Commission for Oakland County's gravel haul program. You should have a copy of the letter here. They're asking us to get back to them a little earlier this year. I did call Tom Noachel and talk to him about the road gravel, because if you remember, last year was the first time that I can recall that we have not spread gravel at all because the cost of the gravel went up so much last year. And just to remind you all, the reason for that is with all the additional roadwork that M.D.O. and the county is doing on major roads, most of the people that make the road gravel mix have decided, well, we're just gonna supply them because it's easier and more profitable for them. So when they sent the bid out for the gravel last year, nobody that supplies the gravel normally responded, not one of them. So they actually had to go all the way to Saginaw Bay. The problem is when you go up the Saginaw Bay, your trucking time is a lot higher. That's what made the gravel go up to, I think it was twenty-four fifty to twenty-five dollars a ton. And it was about seventeen or eighteen before that. When I started here, twenty-four years ago, we could gravel a mile of road for six thousand bucks. When they drop it, they put up roughly speaking, it's about eighteen thousand tons of gravel on a mile, we get about a three-inch bed. If we don't do them periodically, something, kind of spread it around all the time, eventually the roads start getting pretty bad, so the gravel gets pounded right down in and some of it ends up getting peeled off a little bit on the sides of that. We didn't do any last year, hoping the gravel would come down, it's not. I talked to Tom Noachel, he expects it to be the same. I have something I'm working on, but it's too early to say that might get us some gravel going forward, but it's way too preliminary to tell. We need to tell them what we want them to bid on, and since we didn't do any last year, we typically do three, I'm going to suggest that we take some money out of the infrastructure fund at the budget meeting and do six miles this year. I'm, also, you'll see it in a minute, we'll talk about the tri-party next thing, but I think if we don't do it, the roads start getting bad and we end up, you know, you can never quite catch up to it, so if it's agreeable to the board, what I would like to do is get back to Steve Prince, who's doing the program, and tell him that we would like to sign up for six miles of gravel this year.
And the road commission determines where that?
Actually, what we usually do is I ask the local foreman, Tom, gives me a list, here's the roads where I think we're gonna do this. And then we look at it, if we agree, we bet, we normally pick three, but this year we would probably go for six, if it's agreeable to everybody.
You get your motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve and notify the road commission that we'll sign up for six miles of gravel this year. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? Okay, if not, it's gonna be a whole bunch of money when we do it, so Carrie, you want to take a roll call on that?
Bob DiPalma?
Yes.
Patty Bass?
Yes.
Jim Christopher?
Yes.
Gina Musarelli?
Yes.
We'll make a note here to get back to them tomorrow, six months. The next item on the agenda is discuss the tri-party program. And as you know, for the last several years, we ended up using the tri-party program to help cover part of the cost on the trip road project, which needed it very badly. The road commission sends roughly, if you look at the sheet back here, about, I think it's fifty-six or fifty-eight thousand a year in tri-party funds. It looks like for 2020, it's fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four. And on that, we pay a third, the county pays a third, and the road commission pays a third. And we can use that for gravel. And all we have left after trip road was about, I think that chart shows you, it's about two hundred and seventy-eight bucks or something, two hundred and seventy dollars. So we could do a year's tri-party fund, I asked them in a holder to next year, and if we get enough, if we get a similar amount next year, that would mean for about forty thousand dollars, we would have enough money to probably do two and a half, maybe three miles of gravel. So my suggestion is on the tri-party fund, and Tom said we can do this, we've done it before, that we kind of hold that fifty-seven thousand, eight thirty-four in reserve and use it for next year, so we can do some gravel next year. So I don't, I can give them a letter to that effect if that's agreeable to the board. Okay, everybody agreeable? Because we don't need a motion, we're not really spending it, we're just kind of holding it, so I'll send in a letter on that one, too. Okay, next item on the agenda is the 2020 North Oakland Business Card Directory. And that was, the citizen came in and they have this directory card, they put a lot of advertising in municipalities, and a lot of the businesses can advertise on it, and they came in and they, you know, asked us if we wanted to do it, so. Full-page ad, I think was basically half a page of the ad, and then the half a page, we put a little narrative down. And I think we had to come in and take a photo of the staff in the office, so it's kind of good PR for the township. Request is if everybody's okay with paying for a page ad on the Business Card Directory through the citizen.
A full-page or half?
I think we did full-page on that, yeah.
I think it was... So seven fifty?
Yeah. Is there a motion to that effect? Or was that my motion? Somebody want to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, that's the motion. Any questions or comments from the board? Carrie, would you take a roll call on that?
Patty Bass?
Yes.
Jim Christopher?
Yes.
Gina Musarelli?
Yes.
Bob DiPalma?
Yes.
Yep.
Next is the Oakland County Bicentennial Oak Tree Program. I have been getting a lot of mail on this, you know, and originally I said maybe we do it. They're trying to have everybody mark the two-hundredth anniversary of the county with one of several types of oak trees that are kind of resistant to some of the funguses and blight, I guess, they get. And originally I said I would, but then, as I've thought about it, we have a lot of trees in Groveland Township. About eight thousand acres of them, okay, not including the ones on everybody's property. And I can't think of any place, chief, where it'd really work out to put it at, either one of the fire stations or...
Let's think of your house, Bob, we feel like we all live back there.
No, 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 I've got, got a little bunch I gotta cut down on, but...
Gina's missing a few at her house.
The only place I thought they could go, because they send you a lot of these little saplings once, too, was if we wanted to line the Mavis Drive where the new station's gonna go, but I'm afraid with the construction activity going on, it'd be, it'd be a miracle if they didn't all get run over.
About, do you think they would be part of it, wanting?
I don't think so, and I'm sure if they wanted, they can get them. He's actually got a planning layout that they're gonna bring to the Planning Commission about where they want to put some trees and what kind, and the fencing along Dixie Highway to clean it up and all that, so I know they can get them if they wanted, so. I don't know if anybody really feels strongly on this, I, I'm kind of inclined to think, I just don't think we need more trees than we already have. But I'm open to discussion on it.
Well, what might be, I like the idea of offering it to the community if there is anybody, if there's any, we do have a couple new builds who might be interested, and they come in bundles of twenty-five, they are small, I'm sure we could find a place for one, that's our token tree, and then just put it out to the community here, and they said for age groups, you know, churches, schools.
Yeah, Tamrec might want to do something like, plant a big house?
Oh, I haven't thought of that.
That's an idea.
Okay, well...
I mean, I don't know, I'm with you, do we commit to more than twenty-five? Probably not, but...
Want me to see if I can get a bundle of them, and we'll see if anybody wants some? I can't remember, was there even a charge for those?
We'll figure out.
Wait, also Detroit, white oak, swamp oak.
Well, they're in a bundle, so let's just get one kind and be done, yeah. I don't know, it depends where in Groveland if you want swamp oak or not.
Well, swamp oak grows...
Actually, that was the one that looked better, wasn't it, the white flower on it, kind of thing?
Might have been, yeah.
But some of us have all sand.
What can you say about it?
I know, that's what they say. We can put it on the website and see.
You know, maybe if I can get enough of them, I can hand you, put it on the side, and we'll find out what we can get for them. Is that agreeable to everybody? Now we're all looking at more trees, right?
Right.
Next item on the agenda then is PGYA Annual Breakfast?
It is gonna be March fifth, Thursday, March fifth, at seven forty-five, and it will be at the Brandon Township Library, and everybody who would like is welcome to join. And I was gonna ask, Carrie, did they say the speaker was gonna be, Carrie has been being my representative often on...
They spoke about the Care House speaker?
Who, okay.
Yeah, who spoke at the clerk's meeting?
Atanya Womack, yes. She'll have a presentation on Care House. If anybody's interested, I think the flyer went through on the website in the board packets. I was also gonna let people know, I did have a few over there, we ran them off for this meeting, that's just a perk at this meeting to get it rolling, and you're welcome to take them. So, okay, that's the point for those.
All right, next item would be F, and that's PGYA Executive Board?
Yep. Here they're asking us to just approve who their executive board members are for the year. And so I make a motion that we approve the executive board members for Brandon Groveland Youth Assistant as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Done. That's what Bob McCarthy was important to do, right?
Yes, he was here.
Next item is the cost contribution for the SISMO, this is where they, you know, spray along the roads, our part of it, this bill is just two hundred and fifty bucks, but we didn't do any of them, so I think we should do it again.
Are they gonna notify us where and when?
They, they should do the same thing as they did before, you talked to them, right?
I talked to them and was not happy with the response that I got, that's why I'm asking, because I didn't...
But then that guy, I thought the guy, the letter I saw, the email I saw came back, said that I thought he agreed that they would allow you and left you the number, or am I missing that?
Yeah, no, they, they did not, they said that they'll put a notice out, they tried to put a notice out, but they also told me that they literally paint each frag mighty with a special thing so it doesn't contaminate everything, and I know for a fact that's not the fact. And what they're using follows the water table, and I, I can't support that, I really cannot support that.
Yeah, just the problem is if we don't do this, though, I mean, you, this is used for the stuff they put on the roadway, then I can maybe come in...
Right, and they can burn like they tell the rest of us, the EPA tells the rest of us to do, as far as I'm concerned. But yeah, I, you know, you guys can, but I won't support it.
Okay, well, I think we need to do this, if we don't, I'm concerned that somebody would have an accident if they didn't get it out of the way and then say the township was responsible for not allowing the road commission to do it. These are the ones, not that they're going inside people's properties, it's the ones that are doing along the roadway where it disrupts the view, so. I think we need to do this, pay the two fifty for the year. So that's my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay. Carrie, take a roll call on that?
Jim Christopher?
Yes.
Gina Musarelli?
No.
Bob DiPalma?
Yes.
Patty Bass?
Yes.
Maybe you can contact them when it gets close to the time and make sure that you know what they're supposed to do and, okay?
Point one.
Okay, good, good, okay. This next item, Patty, you and I have been working on this one, right?
Yep, this is for the ORB ordinance. So in order to make point twelve, I think it is, miles of Shields Road so that ORBs can go down them, it's quite an ordeal. So I think what we should do with this, the suggestion is to send it to the Planning Commission, and then they have to hold a hearing for it there, a public notice hearing, and prior to that public notice hearing going, the public notice has to be sent to the Board of Commissioners, I'm trying to think, a whole bunch, every municipality in Oakland County. And it has to go thirty days, twenty to thirty days prior to the public notice meeting, the public hearing. So these will go out to all those people on that list, the road commission, the Board of Commissioners, other municipality, I think the forestry organization, and there was one other I can't recall. But we will get that going till they're gone and out of here between tomorrow and Thursday, so. I guess it's up to the board if you want to send it to the Planning Commission is what the decision is.
Well, I think we should, we gotta go through the steps that Dan outlined. They do this up north in places where they allow off-road vehicles on public roads. We don't want to allow it through the township if somebody get killed. But we want to be able to get from the township's property behind consumers onto that little entry road that goes in there. Just over a tenth of a mile there, make it legal so that you don't get a ticket. If they go from the part that's behind consumers, that's abandoned, to that entry, which is a few hundred feet, you gotta do this to get it done. So, it's just, it's cumbersome to do it because you have to notify so many people.
If anybody wants it, I have the outline and the public notice I wrote up, and actually, I had been working on this and I thought it was in this packet, so my mistake, I think that I didn't pass it on to Carrie, so I forgot it, but I have it, and anybody's welcome to it.
So you want us to do a motion to approve sending it to the Planning Commission?
I think so, that we are interested in doing that.
And then notify all the parties?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we send it to the Planning Commission, the public hearing, and then we notify all the appropriate parties for the process in place to take point one-two miles of Shields Road and make it accessible for off-road vehicles. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Let's make a roll call, just in case they wanted to make sure everybody voted, okay?
Gina Musarelli?
Yes.
Bob DiPalma?
Yes.
Patty Bass?
Yes.
Jim Christopher?
Yes.
All right, let's see what else to be happy about.
So now we have the, or the resolutions.
Okay, after the last meeting where we finished the study and we agreed that the fire department's gonna stay Groveland Township Fire Department, we also have to do a village renewal because this is, last year's bill, when it went out in December, was the last bill under the existing fire village. So the bill that comes in on next December twenty-one, this bill, will be whatever we approve at the election in November. And so we've talked to the chief, and what he said at the last meeting, we are going to go ahead and renew the fire village for four years at the current three point eight zero zero five rate, and build the first year at three point five. And that's what this resolution says, so we need a motion to accept this resolution, and then a second on it in the vote.
I'll motion to approve the resolution number twenty twenty dash zero zero five to approve the, the, for the fire village on the August fourth, twenty twenty primary election.
Oh, it's on the primary, not the, okay, very good, okay, on the primary, then. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? Carrie, you want to take a roll call?
Bob DiPalma?
Yes.
Patty Bass?
Yes.
Jim Christopher?
Yes.
Gina Musarelli?
Yes.
I'll send it to Shannon, I'll talk to her and find out where it goes. And I had put a draft of it in the board packets, the actual one, it still has draft on it, but I did send this out to a little attorney, and it has been looked at and sent to his and the county's suggestions, so.
Okay, next item is...
There are ones on the table, that's probably still in there. The one I was just finished up.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the salary resolutions. We have our budget meeting set for Friday at...
No, Wednesday.
Or Wednesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday at four o'clock is public, if you want to sit in on it, it's a workshop to go over the budget. Finished rough drafting it out tomorrow for our meeting, so we have something to work from. But I'm gonna propose an area, like we typically do, a two percent kind of COLO adjustment on all the salaries, so. We gotta do each one of these.
Yes, we do.
Okay. First one...
I can do the supervisor.
Okay.
I'll motion...
That's okay.
I'll motion to set the supervisor's salary at two percent increase in the amount of sixty-seven, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and I will fix the typo, and... Yeah, I know, I'm looking at it too, how did that get there? And for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Questions or comments from the board? Carrie, you want to take a roll call?
Patty Bass?
Yes.
Jim Christopher?
Yes.
Gina Musarelli?
Yes.
Bob DiPalma?
Yes. Carrie, Patty, you want to do the clerk, too?
You can do the clerk.
How do the clerks with a two percent adjustment to the pay rate of sixty-two, nine eighty-nine a year? Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, if not, Carrie, would you take a roll call?
Jim Christopher?
Yes.
Gina Musarelli?
Yes.
Bob DiPalma?
Yes.
Patty Bass?
Yes. Yep, I motion to set the treasurer's salary for a two percent increase at the amount of sixty-two thousand, nine eighty-nine for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, if not, Carrie, would you take a roll call?
Gina Musarelli?
Yes.
Bob DiPalma?
Yes.
Patty Bass?
Yes.
Jim Christopher?
Yes. You want to do the trustee per diem?
Yep, I motion to set the trustee per diem at two hundred and twenty-four dollars per meeting for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year.
Is there a second? I'll second. I'll second, okay. Carrie, would you take a roll call?
Bob DiPalma?
Yes.
Yes.
Peggy Bass?
Yes.
Jim Christopher?
Yes.
Gina Musarelli?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes the resolutions. Miscellaneous reports, see here, I included, just for everybody's verification, so you know. Ruth Johnson has also been quite vocal in supporting our efforts to fight House Bill fifty-two twenty-nine. This is the one that's got the, the RTA bill on it. For those of you who don't know, and we're gonna make, Hattie and I are gonna make a video for Wednesday, start running it. You need to understand, these primaries that are coming up are very important. They're not just figuring out which Democratic candidate's gonna be on the ballot, which Republican ones. There's actually two millages that are coming up here, in the March one. In March, you have to decide whether or not you wanna renew the Art Institute Millage that we all have on our property tax bills. And you also have to decide if you wanna approve point eight-three mills that the Brandon School District wants to put through for some repairs and improvements they wanna make at the Brandon School District. So in March, you're not just voting on who's gonna ultimately be on the ballot. You're also deciding on that day whether or not you want one or both of those tax issues to go through. And in, in the August one, we'll be voting on the fire village, and if that doesn't get approved, there's no fire village. So everybody, and we'll do a video on it when we get closer, but everybody needs to understand, the old one's expired, or has expired. The new one is to replace that, and so that has to be voted on in August. In November, we're quite confident that they're getting ready to basically jam the RTA bill, that's his fifty-two twenty-nine, Rapid Transit Authority Bill, down our throat, and the new county executive has said that that is one of his main goals, is to get that through. All of the township supervisors north of M fifty-nine, because we meet once a month for lunch and have guest speakers, and we had him as our guest speaker a couple months ago. We all made it very clear that we thought this rapid transit bill has nothing in it for any of us north of M fifty-nine. I mean, they're not gonna run the bus lines up to Ortonville to take you downtown, you know, and so we asked, and we've all adopted resolutions at our township boards, we sent them to everybody and their brother, and we all asked that they allow an opt-out on it so that we could say, you know, if you wanna put a rapid transit system in down the Royal Oak or something on the south end, we're pickled pink with it, do it, and just pay for it. It's of no value to us, and the, the tax rate hasn't been announced yet, but the last time they tried to do this, the tax rate that they wanted to use was one point two mills, which is roughly twenty percent more than you spend to operate your own township, and that's pretty much what it is for all the townships. So this is a siphoning of millions of dollars out of taxpayers up in the north end to pay for a rapid transit system that's basically gonna service the south end. And they modified the law recently, a couple months ago, and the last time they tried this, they actually had Wayne, McComb, Oakland, and Washtenaw counties in it, and it got smashed down in McComb County, and Brooks didn't allow it in Wayne County, and so it didn't go through. So they went and modified the state law and said, well, we're gonna have three counties and as long as two of the three vote for it, y'all gotta pay for it. So you can see the handwriting on the wall, it's going to be Washtenaw and Wayne County because they want the rail system on Dan Arbour, and they want the, the bus services and stuff, and there's even speculation that somehow this could be used to pay for some of the pension obligations that they're short on, some of the transit systems that they have in Detroit. I don't know if you've ever been on the Q line, or the People Move, or any, most of this stuff never makes enough money to cover itself anyway. So we're likely to get hit with this tax increase of one, I think at least one point two mills, this fall in the November election. And they also took some language in it that removed it from the headly protection so that it could be raised over time of the five mills. I have to give Pat Kittle, the supervisor in Independence, credit, because he has just jumped on this like a bull, and been kinda getting all of us orchestrated to write the resolutions in our own townships, and writing letters, and all of these things. And of course, Ruth wrote this letter because she's in support of not having that process out here. I've talked to our state rep, Mike, and he's also opposed to it, so we're doing what we can, but I honestly fear there's a very high probability that on the November election, you'll see an RTA bill going through. And I think even if we vote no on it, they're going to force it down our throat. So that's why I'm trying to make sure everybody understands that in March, there's two millage issues. That's the Art Institute and the school bond. In August, there is the fire village, and we, if we don't have that, we have no fire department at all. And then in November, there's likely, and I'm sure it's going to happen, to be the RTA millage issue. So this year, more than ever, you need to, and you need to make sure your friends and neighbors know, you need to vote in every one of those four, every one of those four issues. March, or three, I'm sorry, March, August, and November, all three of them, because there's going to be tax implications on your property tax. I mean, I still get calls from people that, when they get the assessment notice, they call me up and they say, "Well, what's this zoo and art institute on my bill?" I go, "Well, you didn't vote for it either, did you?" So I'm just telling you, there's, it's very important this year to vote for all of them. Okay.
Bond issue for the schools, that's for Brandon schools.
Yeah, not Holly, it's Brandon schools.
And my community college is on the, one for the good rich people that we have in that one corner, so.
Is this on Ruth's website?
Uh,
This is a great visual.
Yeah.
Yeah, I told you, what'll be?
The blue areas, the ones that are gonna benefit from it, in Orange County. All this yellow here, they're gonna be the donators, okay? Just so you understand, but Ruth did a beautiful letter on it, she really did. And I just wanted you to know that both our state senator and our state rep have been very vocal in opposing it.
I, I find it interesting that blue pill pills right there in the middle, they're not gonna apparently use it, get used to it out of there.
Well, you're not gonna run through their territory where they're sitting.
Yeah.
And if they wanna run it up Woodbridge, guess what?
So, um, the only other thing I guess I would report on here before we adjourn this and go to the fire meeting is, I do have another meeting coming up on the possibility that the sewer's running up and down Dixie Highway from Genesee County to basically Grange Hall in Dixie Highway so that we can service the township property. But the numbers have gone up astronomically in the three meetings that I've been to. What we're trying to do now is sit down with the folks in the Water Resource Division, because the way it would happen is while the sewer line would come down from Genesee County, we would actually have it orchestrated, excuse me, orchestrated and arranged through the Water Resource Department in Oakland County. And there are various ways in which they can bill the people that are on it. And the long and the short of it is, the only reason we think there's an opportunity for this right now is in Holly Township, Shannon Industries is going to tie in to the remaining capacity on the Genesee line that's up at Woodbridge. If they don't do that, they could divert two or three million bucks to bringing the bigger pipe down to get all the way to us. We're going to, if we develop the township's property, have to spend probably two or three million bucks for an onsite treatment plant, and it would be environmentally better if we could put that money into getting the sewer line down there. The DNR is going to spend two million dollars to fix the septic system in the DNR state land here, and they've agreed that it would be environmentally better and a better long-term solution if we could put that two million into the sewer line. And, and we know there's a couple of other places that are interested in it, so what we're doing right now is trying to get our hands around this and say, are there enough potential participants in this that already have large dollar amounts, they have to contribute to the sewer line, or to some sort of sewer fix, that would make the sewer line more viable? We have no intention of running it into the township because we don't wanna have high density in the township, but it would facilitate better business development down that Dixie corridor and stop basically at Grange Hall Road. And we're trying to find out if there's enough participants, because one of the ways you can do it is you can go to the people that own several large pieces of property there and say, I'm picking a number out of the air right now, you know, your connections are gonna cost five hundred thousand dollars. You gotta pony up five hundred thousand dollars before we agree to do the project, because we're not gonna have, and George and I were talking about this, he's not going to leverage Holly Township, and I'm certainly not gonna leverage Groveland Township for five or ten million dollars of sewer line, and then hope it works. If these people want it with us, they're gonna have to agree to be paying it, and then they can share the proceeds as it gets expanded or whatever. But it's, it's really too early to tell you. We've had three or four meetings, we've got another one coming up. There's some cautious optimism in it, but I'll let you know when we get a little farther down the line if it actually can work or not. Other than that, Chief, we got a meeting on Thursday with, with an art detective, right? For the station, okay, I'm sorry.
I want to, Danielle?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Danielle.
That's right, I forgot.
Are you done?
I'm done.
So Danielle Wilcock is part-time, yeah, we hired for elections and other various jobs to help in the clerk's office. And with Carrie leaving, she was my deputy clerk. I have asked Danielle if she would be my deputy clerk going forward, and she has said yes, so I want to have her come up and I'll swear. And also, Danielle's going to take over the board agenda packets for the township and the minute taking for the township board. That'll kind of take some, a little bit of job work off of the shoulders of whomever comes in for the Planning, Zoning, and Building Department. That way, they're gonna have board minutes for planning and zoning, and packets, that person will do packets for them, and also administrate the building department. So Danielle, you wanna come up then? I will swear at you. I seem like I've done this a lot. I should know from old by heart, but I go, okay. Okay, State of Michigan, County of Oakland, I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Deputy Clerk in and for the township of Groveland, County of Oakland, and State of Michigan, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I will.
So if you want to.
Okay, anyone, Hattie, do you wanna report anything else from miscellaneous?
Um, I have a couple of things. Well, you covered the youth assisted breakfast. We had several people come in interested in the census pay rates. I did take a minute to pull it up and check it out. It's, they're paying twenty-two dollars to twenty-four fifty an hour for the census workers, and they are in need of it, and you will, they told me you will be in your area if you sign up to go door-to-door when the time comes and talk to people and get their census information. Oh, the other thing, we have our, we have several new precinct inspectors that, and the training, it came up yesterday, or Saturday, actually, I was in here and saw it, but February twenty-seventh is one of the training dates, and March third is the other. And that's where our election workers are gonna work in the polls. And then breakfast, and that's about it.
My daughter signed up with it. Where is that gonna be?
Did she? Um, I will, is she working with us here?
Yes.
Okay, what was her name?
Melissa Shevich.
Okay, um, we will contact her, they're gonna be at County.
Okay.
And one's at nine from noon on the twenty-seventh, and the other one is March third from one to four. So we, we contact the people that we know we have to get trained. And then everybody, I believe, will have to be retrained in June, so it's kind of an ongoing thing. But it's good for two years? Two years, yeah. They change stuff really quick in elections sometimes. You have to double check, but, okay, so that's all I have. Nope, I don't have any second. Jim, did you have anything?
The fire department commission? I have you, okay. Gina? Okay. Okay, with that, I'll open it for public comment if anybody has a question.
Jeremy Chestnut, six hundred and seven, I have three questions. Why don't you guys go for a longer fire village?
Because I think it's imperative that, two things, one, we're gonna see if this works the way we think it will, and two, I think the fire villages should come up when we think there's the highest probability that everybody will come up and vote for it.
I know it's very common for ten and twenty-year fire villages, that's why I ask. Just get it taken care of and you don't have to readdress it.
But then it comes up in the middle of an election year, and you don't get very big turnouts on those, and I think all the people should have a right to vote on it, so we're doing this one for four years.
Okay. My next question is, you guys all gave yourself two percent raises as full-time employees. Are the fire full-time employees getting a raise as well?
Yes, they do.
Same, same, two percent?
Two percent.
Okay.
In fact, we've always given the fire department the same raises we have had percentage-wise, or they've gotten it when we haven't gotten it.
Okay. My third question, I've heard rumors, is the ORB park opening delayed again?
You'll notice I stopped putting it on the sign, right?
That's why I'm asking you.
It's, it's, I think it's delayed of like a week from where it was the last time I had it. I believe the official opening date to the public, I think, is either the twenty-first,
It's still gonna be this summer.
It's July.
Cause I keep pushing, I don't like, I understand there's too many entities involved and the lawyers and.
Yeah, actually, all of that stuff, all of the agreement stuff's been worked out. They're coming before the township planning commission, I think it's the next meeting, isn't it? Yeah, the next meeting with preliminary site plan. I've had discussions with them about the way they are going to operate it, and they've agreed that all of the people that go in to use that park will have to comply like they do with state laws at state parks, other places, so they all have, they have mucklers, because we had one guy that went in with mucklers once.
And obviously, ORB stickers and.
And the guy had the right stickers and all that, and that if they have an event that is not through Oakland County Parks as the managing entity on the park, they will send them to the township for a special use permit at least nine months before that event takes place. So we shouldn't have, in the future, any of them showing up, doing something we don't know about, or that the county isn't already administering the same rules on. It will open in June. What they're doing right now is they're building, uh, they've taken a few of the trails that they thought they might hear some noise from, and either adjusted them down or moved them around so that they're suppressed inside the site. They've moved some of the courses and changed them for different types of vehicles. And they're in the midst right now of, Bedrocks actually got the contract to build them, something they're calling Mount Magnus, which is kind of a sprayed concrete.
Shot Creek.
Shot Creek, that's what I couldn't think of it, yes.
So it won't be road?
It's an obstacle course.
The rock crawler guys.
Yeah, and it's built by some guy that's like world right now, and he does it all over the place. So their intention is to have that and other events, or other obstacles, sponsored by people that they can keep on putting money into the park. But I am confident it will open this July. If it's the twenty-first or the twenty-third.
This summer, I'm not, I'm not naming a date, just this summer.
And you'll see a few more test events, I'm sure, in the spring or the summer before the public opening. But the public opening is supposed to be the twenty-something of.
Are they just gonna have porta-potties out there then for now, is that their plan?
That's all I know right now, but I, we'll see it when they bring the site plan in.
Okay, all right.
And we've talked to them too about the sewer line, but I mean, it's, it's all kinda early.
Oh, it's all.
The site plan, that's March twenty-fourth, is, is that right, Karen?
Isn't it the twenty-fifth this month?
Yeah, it's this month.
Oh, this month, okay.
They're bringing it in, so if you want, you can come to that meeting, and you'll see what they're talking about. You know Mike Donald, right? I mean, he's gonna be there, he's a resident in the township too, he works for Oakland County Parks. He'll be there, I'm sure, making a pitch on what they're going to do, but I've had him talk to our chair in the past so he gets some idea of what it is we want, as I said, I understand that. If you ever, any of the videos that are on the cable channel of the park, if you look at the drones flying over, you can clearly tell it's an ORB park and all the obstacles in it. But if you drive by on Dixie Highway, it still looks like stall rocks are over the ground, you just can't tell that much. So the intention is to have them spruce up the front of it a bit so it looks more appropriate for the park facility that it's done. Some of that I'm sure will be discussed at the meeting.
I'm sure it's gonna explode when it takes off.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure too.
And that should help with the tax base on the quarter.
That's the intent. That's the intent, to try and capitalize the tax base on it, and that's the reason why we're even considering looking at the sewer line because it would be easier to have different kinds of developments.
Oh, I completely agree. And keep it over there.
Yeah, exactly.
And not over here where we all live.
Yeah, no, it's exactly what the intent is.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Yep. Well, there's been some discussion on our Facebook website about kind of late Oak Hill and M15.
Down here?
Yes. What I put up there is who's getting tired of taking your light in your hands trying to get on that M15.
Oh, oh, you're over here. Oh, down there you can.
Yeah.
That's a brain.
Well, this is our Facebook website. But they also put in there that they're the plan to put that light up and also to pave Oak Hill Road.
Here's what I tell people when they say, what are the roads that get paved down here? I tell them, if you want an honest answer, not your grandkid's life. Okay. The other answer I give them is, and a lot of people don't, except for all kinds of things, oh, that paved road because he drives it, has got nothing to do with it. The only roads that get paved out here are primary roads, and it's true, Oak Hill is a primary road, but they only fund paving for one mile of gravel roads in Oakland County per year. There's over 700 miles. So if you can live for 700 years, you'll get to see them all paved. And the only roads that they pave, that surface funding committee that I'm on that gets the money back from the federal government, that they only pave primary roads that are gravel. So that means in our township, the only roads that will ever get paved with that money, and that's how you get basically 90% of the money in a grant, and you only have to put 10% in. The only roads that can ever be paved here are Groveland Road, Grange Hall Road, Oakwood Road, excuse me, Oak Hill Road, I meant, I'm sorry. And then going north and south, it's Wildwood Road from Dixie to Grange Hall, Barron Road from here to Groveland Road, and then you take Groveland Road up to Double Curves by Chief Mason's house, and they call it Van Road again, to the county line. That's the only north-south road. So those are the only roads that are ever going to be paved out here because all the other ones, you have to pony up all of the money yourself. So it's about $2 million bucks a mile now.
That's the reason we live in Oak Hill.
Yeah, well, in Oak Hill, the only way, what I had suggested to them when we laid out the paving plan for Groveland Township decades ago, was that maybe in the case of Oak Hill, it would be better to take where we have Oak Hill right now and go down higher because it would eliminate two of those 90-degree turns, and then come back up on the other side in Brandon and out onto M15. I don't know if that ever happened because typically that would have to mean higher road would be changed to a, to a primary road, and I don't think that's ever going to happen, okay? The other reason Oak Hill didn't get done is, if you remember about 10 or 12 years ago.
Oh, delivery.
Okay, well, we had a committee that was looking at trying to widen M15 from I-75 all the way up into I-69. And in that plan, one of the proposed ideas, don't get excited because it all died, okay? But one of the proposed idea was when they got up into Brandon, they had to actually close the road down to widen it where it goes by those lakes, you know, Lake Louise and that, because you've got to build it up so the road doesn't sink, right? And they thought, well, if we close the road to do that, what we'll do is we'll pave, the road commission would then pave Oak Hill Road all the way over to Dixie Highway, and then have them come all the way back either on Grange Hall or some other road up in Atlas to get back to M15. And once they said that, we don't want to pave that road, we'll wait for you to pave it for nothing. But then that whole project died, so I'm being very honest with you when I say, I don't know. If there's discussion to put a light there, that must be something that Kathy and Brandon is talking about, I don't know, and that first part of it, because until you get to that first 90-degree turn, that's all engraved in township, so I don't, I don't have anything to do with that right now. And I'm not aware of any plan to do that. Okay, anything else?
Hi, Stephanie, I'm a 9540, higher road. I just have a question regarding the staffing of the office, so I apologize, I'm horrible with names, so Carrie is resigning.
Yes.
And we just appointed Danielle to the deputy clerk.
Yes.
Correct, so that would be you.
Yes, correct.
And then we still have Teresa in the office, correct?
Yes.
And her position is?
She's the other staff administrator. The office has had almost the entire time I've been here, 24 years, two office administrators that we use, and generally one of them is the deputy clerk and the other one is generally the deputy treasurer.
Okay.
And then we've had a part-time person, which is kind of what Danielle's been doing for us now.
Okay, and then.
That's typically what happens, but when we had a lot of building back in the 2000s before the economic collapse in '09, we actually had three full-time people then, but we had a lot more activity going through the office and a lot more building permits and stuff.
Okay, so isn't Nicole part of the office staff now as well?
Well, she's, Shelley appointed her deputy treasurer, but she's, it's, it's $50 a month position, she doesn't come in every day and work.
So what exactly, so what has Teresa do, and then what is Danielle going to be doing? And then we, you're going to replace Carrie, so that's like.
Danielle is going to be picking up kind of what Carrie does right now, trying to do the building department stuff and backing up.
But you're still looking to backfill that.
Yes, we're going to hire a full-time position for Carrie's place. So it'll be planning, zoning, and the building industry.
And then Danielle does the.
Danielle will do election, she's our election administrator, she'll do payroll, and she across, will across train for the building and any other various things that are needed.
And then I just had one other question for Chief Mason. I was unable to attend a special meeting last week for the board, but I did review the video. In the video, you mentioned a $4 an hour raise for staff. How is that going to work? Like, is that across the board for people that hold shifts?
It's for the shift workers that are not full-time.
Why would shift workers get $4 an hour raise and full-time not?
Because full-time, full-time gets the 2% like they get every year, this will be a one-time, you know, for several years. As you know, we haven't had a pay raise for the paid-on-call guys for several years.
Correct.
And the full-time get benefits, the part-time don't.
That doesn't, that shouldn't matter, you can go to any, your hourly pay does not go based off of you get benefits or retirement. You're looking at.
Not, not what pays their, their hourly people more than their full-time too, and we actually pay more on full-time pay than not for them.
You're going to have filling people making more than your full-time guys.
Hold on, hold on. Tommy's making $24.92, shift people will be making $19.
How does Tommy make $24?
He adds in the benefits of $18,000 plus he works 49 and a half weeks and 54 hours a week.
So he can go get hired on to Independence and make $80,000 a year with full benefits.
He can do that if he wants.
Your hourly, you're going to have your part-time people making more than your full-time guys.
We are never going to pay on any job here like some larger communities that have much.
So you find it perfectly, you guys just gave the board members a 2% increase that we're 27 hours a week. I'm looking at clerks here, you find it perfectly acceptable that they make more than people that put their life on the line for this township?
I think the pay is right.
We looked at the average pay for this area, and they're making at least.
That's funny, because I have it right here. This is directly from a fire chief in the area that just put this together January 1st. So a lieutenant, basic lieutenant will get $46,000. A firefighter that's been doing the job for five years gets $54,000 according to Groveland's numbers that were given to those chief.
If they work how many hours?
It's not based on hours, this is a yearly.
Okay, so Tommy's.
Estimate. And this isn't just based on Tommy, this is other full-time people.
Okay.
I'm just saying. My husband's, this affects my husband's pay, this affects the wife.
2% pay raise over what he got last year, and you got a, he's getting benefits now, and he's gets five days of vacation a week, a year, which is two and a half weeks for him.
You guys act like you owed, they owe you something for benefits, it was agreed, it was voted on last.
I'm not saying anything. I'm just saying that's part of your benefits package. He'll get a 2% pay raise, all full-time will get a 2% pay raise, I assume every year from now for the next five years where the shift people will not. Shift people have been making $11, EMTs is way too low for many years, and no one complained that the full-time people were making much more than the EMTs were, so I, I mean, you can argue it either way, I guess, but, you know, for an EMT making $11 an hour, that's way too low. We, two years ago, we gave the medics about a $2 an hour pay raise because the medics and the basics were making pretty much the same, and now we're going to give them a $4 an hour pay raise because, or to stay competitive with the, with NACFA's pay, and it's still not as much as NACFA gave their shift people, and their full-time people are making less than our full-time people, so.
There's a reason why people are full-time, they get more benefits than part-time people.
And they, and ours are. I agree, they do.
Yeah, it's come at how much time though of us fighting for it.
Been in the job less than two years now, so all I can say is, we've got benefits, we've got a pay raise, we've got a number of pay raises coming.
Stephanie, if you're interested in the jobs, we just passed our new handbook, our policies and procedures. If you want to get a copy of that, it'll tell you what everybody's job in the office is.
Okay, thank you, Gina.
Anything else? Okay, motion to adjourn and reconvene for the fire board?
Is that your motion?
Yes.
I'll support.
All in favor? Okay, Kevin, any issues?
Apologize, I didn't include the normal summary sheet.
Actually, I like this, this is much better.
I gave, we had 72 calls for January, we had 84 calls last year, 95 I think the year before. So we're kind of tracking, we're at 99 right now, so today's the 10th, we're 27 calls into this month already, so we're kind of on the same course as 75 calls in this month. The sheet has the breakdown of calls there. I'm playing with a different report to see which one looks better, but right now I think this incident type count is probably the, the best one so far.
Yeah, no, I like this, this is a lot better than you gave me.
Couple of things I had on that summary sheet was, and you have it in your package, we discussed in the past the hose testing, we paid just shy of four grand last year for having our hose tested, and they did a very.
The machine's only $24.
Well, they did a terrible job, so we've all been talking about it. This machine, which we're not exactly positive this is the one we want, but this is, this will do the job, so we're thinking this might be the one. Well, I'm asking to spend about $3,500 for this pump and some manhole and some other accessories, so I'd like permission to spend up to $3,500 for the hose testing assembly.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we allow Chief to spend up to $3,500 for the hose testing machine.
I'll support.
So any questions or comments from the board? Carrie, would you take a roll call?
Hey, Beck?
Yes.
Jim Christopher?
Yes.
Gina Musarelli?
Yes.
Bob DeTong.
Chief, you, you're comfortable that if you decide this is the machine that you and the guys want, that the $3,500 will cover it?
And if it's not, I'll come back, but I think this is one Captain Williams picked out, he thinks this is good. We have a meeting tomorrow, we'll talk about it and make sure it's put on.
Do you know where you want that funds to come from, from Chief?
Quickly purchased.
Perfect.
Some other things we're working on, the third bunk room at Station 2, Tent Nicholson and Stacy Marke cleaned that out, we painted it at the weekend, we've got some laminate flooring left over from the other bunk room, we're trying to find.
Did you move the room on that one? You're in Station 2, right?
Yeah.
I thought you were going to move the room.
No, no, this is the third bunk room that you probably don't even know about.
Oh.
This is over by Tommy's, there's a bunk room that was sold.
Oh, okay.
They cleaned out all the junk, and the floor's in bad shape, so.
Okay, I know.
We're going to put wood laminate if we can match the wood that we already have, and we painted it, put the trim in there, so we're talking about either saving it as a bunk room or making it Tent Nicholson's office, so.
Okay.
And we're working on the tower remodel, we got started on it, got some wire and things like that, we're going to, we've figured out the furnace that we're going to put in there, so furnace will go on the first floor, just goes through the wall, we're going to put baseboard heaters on the second and third floor just to supplement if need be, and we're going to put a chase down the stairways with a blower on it, so you can blow the hot air back down and cold air back up, so.
No pole?
And the other thing is we ordered and got in two cinch collars, which are for ice rescue. Basically, they're yellow floating collars that you can, you know, swim out to them, put one arm through it, get it around their neck, and if you pull on it, it tightens up around and helps pull them out. So those came in, and we're going to do ice rescue training tonight, but we've got a call right when we're going to start, so that got canceled. So Bob, if you want to come out, we'll let you know, and you can jump in the ice.
I'll pass on that.
We'll put a suit on.
We might be able to raise money that way.
Other than that, we just, we got the design meeting on Thursday, and we've got benefits meeting on the 19th.
By the way, the new, I tried the new HRA, it worked. Only glitch, I mean, one call, it took care of it right away, it worked.
We haven't received cards yet.
That was nice.
I don't have a card either, I just faxed them to them.
I have to make a call tomorrow.
I was going to say, we called them four times and we can't get anybody to answer our questions.
Really?
Yeah.
I called them and she said, yeah, you're right, I'll take care of it. I got to check.
Yeah, Tommy called them twice last week, and then he called again today, and they're like, oh, we need to look online, and we did, and there's nothing there.
For the card?
Yeah.
I haven't tried anything.
They're supposed to mail them to you.
Well, he talked to our rep groupies ago, and she said they were supposed to be there a week later, which would have been two weeks ago, and we still haven't got them.
I'll call and see, I've got a couple other questions.
And some people, I asked a lot of people if they got their W2s, most have, but there were a couple that have not.
Yeah, Derek didn't because it came back to me, but I've talked with him and I mailed it back to him. I, yeah, if you know.
Derek was the only one I can think of, but.
Oh, okay, good. Yeah.
That's just because he got a new address.
Yes, and I didn't have it on file, so I put it out, or he didn't update it. I'll put it in and we'll.
Oh, and that was the other thing I didn't write down, we're going to have training Wednesday night at the, the house on Elliott.
Doing the reverend?
Ellis, Ellis Road. And Sunday, we think we're going to burn the garage down.
All the stuff's okayed and disconnected now, the gas and electric?
We don't care about the garage, I don't know if the gas has been disconnected yet.
Because Will had the forms that she had to get done.
She signed off all the forms, we asked company to come out, Lieutenant Deckers handling that, come out and shut it off at the road, but we're just going to burn the garage and it's far enough away, and then they were going to come out and trim some of the trees so we don't catch the wires and fire too.
Yeah, okay, good.